Mr. Slack again, please. They're having some issues with their setup.
I'm on it.
Thank you. Phil, you're looking awfully thoughtful there. Oh, maybe his screen's frozen.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Oh, I can hear you.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. It was kind of like a side shot there and it froze just like that, so.
That's not bad. That's a very thoughtful. That's kind of like a Rodan pose.
Big my noses, yeah.
No, no, you're fine. At least just not like it froze when you're taking a big swig of water or something like that, you know?
Yeah, I hear you.
We'll be coming another second here. Getting it right about now. All right, we're gonna have to just go ahead and start. Let's have to jump in when he jumps in. All right, call the meeting to order and first thing on the agenda is to approve the meeting minutes from June ninth and thirtieth.
I will make the motion to approve the minutes from June ninth and June thirtieth.
Any discussion? Tim Daly seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, okay. Uh, next up is the treasurer's report.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Lot of thing.
Your internet connection is unstable.
All right, pretty comprehensive report.
I will make a motion that we authorize the payment of the bills.
All right, do we have a second? Ed seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, all right, and then the treasurer's report itself.
I'll make a motion to accept it as written.
Ed seconds, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, and then.
Great job.
Yep, very good job. All right, next up, uh, reports, cemetery report being first. Uh, I know Jim just put in his, uh, new Calvert there, uh, drinking a Calvert pipe and, uh, it came out great. They did a great job, so that's all done. We have a motion to approve Jim.
Just so everybody knows that they're looking to do an overlay on Earl Abbey. Um, they're just waiting to hear back from the family, but they finally are moving forward on that, so that's a good thing.
That is a good thing.
I'll make a motion to accept the cemetery report as written.
Sorry.
Tim seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, next up is codes. Always busy.
He does a good job on that. I'll make the motion that we accept the codes as written.
Tim Daly seconds. Let's wait for Patty's probably on the phone with Kevin. Put your back back. You have a motion and a second to accept the code report. Do any discussion other than what we've already said?
Uh, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, the dog control.
Two lost dogs got returned, all good.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to accept the report as written.
Second.
Tim Daly seconds, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, DPW report. I know these guys have been very busy.
Uh, how's it been going now that they're all back? Is everybody feeling okay?
Yeah, everybody's doing good. Yeah. Yes.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
That one on Clinton's been maintaining since you guys had to mow it?
Hmm. You know, to be honest with you, Tim, I didn't check it today, but the other, well, Friday, I wasn't mowed at the point.
It wasn't?
No.
Did you get it?
I'll, I'll check it tomorrow and get back to you on it.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Yep. It was really getting high again, so.
Sure.
Does the people live in that building or is it an empty building?
Empty.
Oh, so the bank is just screwing around and not doing it, or the, or the realtor.
Yep.
I'll make the motion that we accept the, uh, report as written.
Tim Daly seconds. Uh, I know Pat's still trying to help Kevin, uh, all in favor?
Good job, Phil.
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Aye.
Fire department, next. Uh, I see Melon's not here, but Tim Maxon is. Tim, do you have anything to add?
I don't know. You had a chicken barbecue that was pretty successful, sold out. Looking forward to do a couple.
It was delicious, by the way.
Looking forward to doing a couple more. Well, we're talking about one in August and maybe Saturday or Labor Day weekend.
Can't go wrong.
Start with two fifty and maybe we'll jump up to four hundred and see what happens, but I walked down Albany Street twice, has turned people away.
I bet you'd sell five hundred if you got them, but I agree.
Well, Legion's doing one this Saturday, I think, twenty, or the twenty-fifth, not this Saturday. So we don't want to step anybody's toes. You know, so that's why we're gonna wait and
Right.
see what happens, but we're definitely gonna shoot and advertise. I told them if we're gonna do it, we should advertise now so people know we're doing it.
For sure.
And so, and then we know we scheduled one.
Yeah, yeah, the sooner you can announce it, the better to avoid overlap.
Yep, um, and Pat was there yesterday. The started, uh, I don't know what, how much they got done today, but they're supposed to start the gas project today. From the firehouse, then they're going down the side and then to the back, tie into what they need to do so, what DDS can continue doing their work.
Right.
Tie into what they need.
What's that? Somebody say something, I didn't hear it. So I don't know, he says it's only gonna take a couple of days to do, once they do it, so they'll be in and out of there. And it's no damper to the fire truck. The only truck we moved was the ladder truck. I figured that was too heavy to go across, it's steel plate, so we moved that for the day. Well, then everything's going fine down there.
Good deal. That's good to know. Uh, all right.
I'll make the motion. Except the fire report is written.
Ed seconds, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Certain Pat said, I, he just can't say it. We're gonna call it unanimous. Silence is consent. Uh, all right, next up is police reports. Uh, I don't see, oh, there's Bob. Anything to add, Bob?
Hi, not really, other than McMahon's. Um, the barbecue for law enforcement appreciation, appreciation day is gonna be August eighth and, uh, just planning for that is all, so.
Very good.
Nothing really I can think of.
Bob, would you like your, or do you like your chicken I bought you?
Yeah, I really enjoyed the chicken you bought me, the round chicken you bought me, yes.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tim.
You're welcome, buddy. I got approved the marasok too, so.
I did, yeah.
Did it have sprinkles on it?
It did.
No, no, it was a plane. He's concerned about my health on this one.
Can't afford sprinkles. He's not worth that much.
Ah, okay, thanks, Tim. I thought you're concerned, I thought you're concerned about my health all along.
I was.
All right, uh.
I'll make the motion that we accept the police report as written.
Very good.
I'll second.
Hey, Kevin.
Sorry I'm late.
That's all right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, if you guys are all set with me, I'm gonna sign off.
We are. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep, thank you, bye.
All right, next up, we've got recreation. So Little League is starting, uh, in a slightly altered form. And we are taking sign up for football and cheerleading. Being optimistic, knowing we may have to return the money if, uh, those things don't happen. Unfortunately, the basketball courts are still closed and will be closed until further notice. It's up to the governor, not to us. Um, I think those are the big things. Um, Dirk, Dirkie and Newton are available to rent again, but you can't have more than fifty people. So any other discussion on that?
Um, I'm gonna, oh, go ahead, Ed.
Well, I'm gonna be, uh, I believe, uh, tomorrow, uh, using the drone to photograph the parks for grant applications and flying it down the river for the River Trail application. So, Steve said lungs, it was under four hundred feet and we didn't photograph people, we're okay, so.
All right.
So, but anyhow, that's recreation kind of thing.
Records.
So we're, we're, we're gonna take some photos and stuff like, like Dirty Park, so we can go to, uh, uh, go for the grant for like PlayStations and that kind of stuff. So that may help, it may not help, but hey, it doesn't cost the village anything.
I'd like a free PlayStation.
I'm sure you would.
All right, uh, Tim, were you starting to make a motion there?
I was gonna make a motion and I was just gonna also just say real quick that, uh, I, I viewed the Little League, uh, practice because my son's in it. And, uh, they are making a serious effort to adhere to all the rules that they laid down, so it's a good start so far. Just wanted to add that.
Very good.
But yeah, I'll make the motion to accept the, uh, rec, uh, report as written.
Uh, all right, there's a race between those two. Dan, you picked the winner. Uh, one more part of this point of discussion. I know that they want to pour some concrete, put in some baddy cages down there, so they're gonna look to either do a new contract or amend the current contract to allow them to do that. They've got it all donated, wouldn't be any cost to us. So, you know, I, I think that's fine, but.
We could probably just write up a simple MOU or MIA.
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll let, uh, Tanya and Danny.
That's a design that.
Yeah, so, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you unanimous? Okay, very good. Um, and then we're, uh, water and sewer. Fixing leaks, helping with, uh, the big sewer project that we have going on. So pulling rags out of the pumps. And, uh, I think that's about it. We have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make them.
Uh, I'm gonna give it to Ed with Kevin as a second and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next up, we've got privilege of the floor. Um, Fred wasn't able to get on the Zoom, but he wanted to let you guys know or let everyone know that the town of Homer is working with the county on a, um, countywide agreement for solar projects citing for what they're, what they'll charge and everything, which I think is, uh, probably a good idea. You know, I've heard about a project that is in three different towns and each town is getting a different amount of money. Um, just because, you know, of the way they, this company went in and negotiated, I don't think that's great, so doesn't have a big impact on us, but he wanted to let us know. Um, and that their board will be voting Ed on the two thousand dollar allocation for the LWRP at their next meeting. I talked to him about it, so.
Wow, I didn't think they were gonna do that.
Yeah, I spoke with him, um, yesterday, I think it was. Or Friday.
Great.
Yes, indeedy. Um, all right, on from that, we go to, uh, waiving the town of Homer water bills for thirty-one North Main Street in perpetuity, or basically as long as we're there, since we're there using probably as much or more of the water. So, seems like.
It's an old brainer.
Especially when they're not charging us for cleaning currently, which they're supposed to.
I'll make the motion that we approve waiving the town of Homer water bill. Second.
Kevin seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Uh, let's see, next up, we've got, uh, water and sewer, uh, billing process. We've got a couple of adjustments there.
Yep.
So really, the only adjustment, Hal, is, um, that instead of going to the board every single time with adjustments, we can do it by email and the board would vote, um, unless they choose to move it to the board meeting. That way we don't hold the taxpayers up.
Right. That sounds fine.
I'll make that motion that we approve, uh, water billing adjustments via, uh, email. Second.
Kevin seconds, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next up, we've got the, uh, RFP for the welcome signs. Um,
I thought we'd put that on hold. I know, I saw that, but I, I thought we were on hold for, till to see how the budgets came out and everything.
But I thought we needed to do it, though, for one of our other things. It was gonna.
We never held the money. The money for this is still there. It's in our C, our special grants fund. So there's thirty-five thousand there. Um, it's just been so long ago, we need to go back over the requirements to make sure what it is and what dates we wanna use.
All right, so we can't use the money to balance budgets or anything, so if it's, uh, allocated, then I, I say go for it, then.
And so,
we'll go on.
As I said, we still have to let the RFP to see what they come back with, so we're still a few steps away from actually purchasing.
Yep, and when this goes out, Dan, I'm gonna, um, email you what the final sign design was. It's basically the RFP is pretty much the same, except the different artwork goes on the inside.
We're good.
Um.
You know, I, I know that the money's already there, but I kinda get a vibe that it's bad timing.
Yeah, Kevin, this is money that we can't use for the, our budget or anything. It's in that special grants account. So it can be used for certain things.
I understand, I understand that. It just seems to me like it's bad timing. But it doesn't matter.
Well, that's why I'm saying, we're still, we're just letting the RFP, we're not purchasing the signs yet, so we can still, oh, if things happen, optics or otherwise, we can still put the hold, but at least now we're not holding ourselves up, uh, if we're ready to go. If we look back and say we're ready to go, then we'll have it.
All right, go ahead. Sounds, I'm good.
So, yep. Yeah, I think the only change really is that I need to send the new artwork. That's pretty much it, I think. All right. Um, do we have a motion to send this out?
I'll make it. I'll make, go ahead, Tim.
Yep.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would personally like to have a little space in the bottom to put signs in, you know? And you never did, but that's okay.
You mean for special, for special.
Like vote today, or senior centers open, there's no room.
Through all of this, way back when we came up with the final design that we came up.
I know, I was disappointed then too, just saying.
Well, I'm sorry to disappoint you, my friend.
That's, that's been only.
Won't be the last time.
Nope.
All right. We had Tim made a motion. Do we have a second?
I seconded.
Seconded, all right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, looks unanimous. Um, all right, the next is the, uh, little white church, uh, planned in their RFP.
Randy was gonna be on, but he can't. Um, he's been in service down where he's at on vacation. I did provide that email, so there might be some questions that, uh, you guys want to, uh, offer, then I can take back to him through email tomorrow or by phone. Um, and the only update really to the plans is the kitchen work, so. And there's also eleven by seventeen printout on the counter, if anyone wants to come down and take a look at it.
Yeah, just a recap for our vis, viewing audience. Uh, it was five, five parts. Uh, once the church north wall and east porch, uh, one was the west porch and ramp. Uh, one was the link and toilet facilities. Uh, D was the church entry steps and E was the kitchen area. Of which, uh, pretty much A through D are the ones that we gotta do in order to make it usable. And we had the E in their kitchen as a, if we can, it's there. So these are all things that we need to do in order to make it get a certificate of occupancy.
And it's not a full kitchen, it's just a warming kitchen, catering kitchen.
Right, yeah.
All right, do we have, uh, any other discussion on this? The motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Ed makes it.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, unanimous, okay.
As far as discussion, I think at some point, we really need to start looking at exterior, buttoning up the exterior and painting, but that's.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, uh, comments. First up, the attorney, Dante, do you have any comments?
No, I do not.
No comments, all right. Next up, board members, I'll start with Pat.
So, uh, I attended the town of Homer board meeting on July eighth. Uh, of note for us is that the, there's a new hunting license program. Um, so they've got the kinks worked out, it's up and running, so if you need a hunting fishing license, they are ready to go. Except for Phil, you Phil, you can't, you can't get any hunting licenses this year. You got something last year, you gotta keep it fair for everybody.
That's all I got, a lifetime, so I'm good, so.
Uh, the Kevin Fitch, the legislator was there and it was already in the paper, but the county will not be opening senior centers this year because of the, this budget year because of COVID related. I know it's already in the paper, but I wanted to mention that again. Uh, for the phase three streets, Phil's already aware of this, and I know, I think Tim mentioned this before, but for everybody else, so for this phase three of the gas, they are going to do from, uh, the eighty-one up Main Street to Elm Avenue. Uh, Wall Street, Pine Street. James Street's gonna be an upgrade, so I'm not quite sure what they're gonna do with that, but it shouldn't be as much digging. Uh, Kiyuga, from Main Street to Cortland Street. Copeland will be from Main Street to Cortland. Uh, the section of Copeland that goes to the Elks and higher physical therapy. And then Albany Street from Main Street to the river. And they said this should be the last major phase, uh, next year should be smaller by streets, nothing quite this large. Uh, there's, as Tim mentioned, they're starting with the fire department in central, uh, it's kind of in the middle of their project, but they wanted to make sure that we had the fire department, uh, taken care of first to, uh, eliminate any issues with response times. So, uh, I'd like to thank Tim and Mike and the DDS and ISAC who all met, uh, yesterday to make sure that our first responders, uh, could get out. Oh. Um, friendly reminder, tomorrow is the last day for the extension on the state and federal taxes, so if you haven't filed your taxes yet, uh, get them in. And then, uh.
I just got, just got her done, Pat.
Uh, and I'm gonna steal some of Ed's thunder here, is, uh, for those that got their surveys and the water bills, make sure you turn those in. And on a side note, um, if you go down Water Street, you can see the Water Street pedestrian bridge a lot better now, a lot of the brush has been cleared around it. I was doing a little research on that and that bridge actually was deeded to the village. Uh, so that's something we might need to look at a little bit later, uh, to help make that more pedestrian friendly. And that is all of my notes.
Uh, so on that, Pat, I did meet with Fran and, and tour all those buildings, um, last week, Friday, or I think it was Friday, maybe Thursday. And we did talk about that bridge and there's, there are some, uh, some of the guardrails and the wooden beams and things that are there to prevent cars from going in that are kind of falling apart and they're gonna go ahead and replace those for us for free, so.
That's nice.
Nice thing, yep. Um, um, yep, I think that's all. Uh, Tim Daly, what do you have?
Uh, just talking about that baseball before, uh, so I can't already ruin my own thing, but, um, yeah, no, I think so far so good with them out there. Uh, seems like they're all really making the effort to, uh, adhere to all the rules, so.
Good.
Yep.
Ed.
Uh, Dante, Route eleven, are we still doing good work there?
We've had a little bit of a hiccup with the surveyor, Ed. Um, the last communication I had with him, I think, was last Thursday. He was supposed to get the surveys back about two weeks ago. Um, I don't know.
Back when?
Yeah, I don't know.
He's pretty dependable.
Yeah, yeah, he is. Um, and he's usually, you know, gets stuff when he says he's gonna get stuff, so there must be some sort of issue. Um, I was gonna reach out and call him today and it just got away from me, but I'll call him tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, great.
This isn't gonna hold us up on our overall timeline, is it Dante?
Well, I would like to have the title work done soon rather than later, but no, it shouldn't.
Oh, that's good. Um, LREP is, uh, working, we're getting a survey. Once we get that, there's no reason why, uh, we can't, uh, assuming Ben and the rest of the crew here look at the codes. Then all we have to do is type up all our minutes that Hal has, uh, very judiciously been collecting since last December. And, uh, I'll help him with it, actually, uh, so not a problem. And so we're looking good there, and so, yeah, that's it.
All right, Kevin.
Yeah, Ed just asked my question to Dante, but, cause I spoke with Mike Harder just one yesterday. They're pretty much done and out of there.
They have, yeah, I mean, they've been making great progress. They have a few more things that I see, but not really much compared, so, yeah.
No, they, they've really done the, the part on their end.
Yep, yep.
And then I see that, um, they get all the heavy equipment moved in where Vernderry's going, so. Do we know when they're gonna be breaking ground?
I would, I gotta guess any minute now. I saw that, because on, on the way here, I said, oh, I guess, I guess we're gonna get going, so.
Go get my car washed.
Yeah.
Well, it looks like they, they already did all the dig save for it.
Right, I saw that today.
Yep, yep. And then on the other end of town, the Arbor Flats, they're, they're pre-selling all their condos already, so.
Wow.
Yep.
I've had people call me about it, so, yeah.
Me too.
Yep.
But I, I see that we're either black tapping or. But I, I see that we're e, either black tapping or sealing the driveway at, uh, that, on, uh, Newton Street. That's a lot of money to spend for sealing, I thought.
It's, it's not, uh, the normal ceiling, Kevin. It's the, it's an, like another top coat, because when they did it, they did like a really rough, uh, asphalt there. And it's so it's to fill in, I think, all of the, uh, Phil probably knows exactly what I, I'm just making up things right now.
Well, I just thought, I just thought it was a lot.
It's probably micro paving, they call it. It's a sand oil mix and it fills in all the cracks, holes and all that, so.
Yeah, it, I mean, it is, it is a lot, but, but, uh, they've got it in the, in their, but, you know.
Yeah, I know. I talked to Tanya about it, but still, it just seemed like a lot. But if it's already there, you know, get her done.
Um, alright, anything else, Kevin?
No.
No? Alright, uh, let's see, so I went to the, uh, Homer School District reopening meeting yesterday and, uh, kinda went through their plans or the beginning of, of the framework of what their plans will be. We have to come up with a final, uh, plan by the end of the month and then submit it for approval. Um, so it's pretty extensive, as you can imagine. Uh, all the different things have to be considered. Uh, it's almost overwhelming, so, but they're gonna be sending out a survey soon to all residents. Um, uh, well, maybe not all residents. It might be, I'm not sure if it's going to all residents or just all parents, but um, that'll be coming out, and so the more data they can get back, the more it'll help, I think, with their decisions. But they're planning for a, a complete normal reopening, sort of a hybrid reopening, and then also having it all be online again, uh, for the semester, so they're covering all their bases. So, um, I think that's about all I have, other than I've been working with the county, uh, sheriff, uh, the university, um, and the city to try to coordinate one big meeting to handle the governor's executive order two oh three, which is a complete review of all, um, police procedures. Um, and going through it, upgrade, updating it, um, getting feedback from community members. Uh, and then we put the plan out for the community to make comments on, and then it comes back and it'll come to us for a vote. So the thought being it would be the best to have all four law enforcement agencies using the same plans and rules, so it didn't matter if you were across this municipal line or, or, you know, three feet on campus or off campus. It would be the same all, all throughout the county. We're just not that big of a county that it makes sense that we would need a bunch of different plans.
Yeah.
So, still waiting to see if that's gonna happen. Uh, the city's not sure, and so, um, they have until Sunday to let me know if they're gonna participate or not. Uh, if not, then we may just go it alone and just do it ourselves and, and, uh, uh, so we'll have to figure that out, but that's one of the big things that I've been working on.
I've had people sign, ask to sign up to do that review process, by the way.
Yeah, let me know if you can tell me who they are, Ed, um.
Oh, I can. Kevin and I both got an email.
Okay, good.
And I, I sent this lady that we're doing this and once we found out more, then we'll have her get involved and, you know, which is that outreach stuff.
Okay, yeah, perfect, perfect.
You know, I'm all for it.
Good. Um, alright, that's all I have. Um, now we need a motion to go into executive session. We've got some personnel matters that we need to discuss.
I'll make the motion, we are going to executive session to discuss personnel matters according to the law.
Seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, are.